Stand and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands in the center of this room. Next would be the approval of the minutes. Does everybody read the minutes?
I made one correction. I changed the current name to Rena to Marina. My spelling is a little...
I don't think we have to amend the minutes for that.
I'm correct, correctly without being...
I think that's fine. Any other additions, corrections? Not have an entertaining motion to approve the minutes?
I'll approve the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mityer to approve the minutes is our second. Second by Commissioner Miller. Any more discussion on the minutes? Not hearing any others in favor say aye. Opposed. Minutes approved. Next would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, attractions, corrections?
I'd like to bring up later in new business or unfinished, I'm not sure which, about taking county vehicles for transportation to and from work.
Okay. We can just add that to the old unfinished business here and talk about whatever. Are there any other additions, corrections, attractions?
Another thing I got is just some road issues, but I didn't miss one.
Well, I think we just talked about that when Skyler's in here, something like it's just road issues, so. If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mityer to approve the amended agendas, our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holm. Any more discussion? Not hearing any others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda approved. First item under Old Unfinished Business would be the county committee member replacing Corvay Oger.
I thought I had a guy, but...
Just backed out at the last second?
Yeah.
I mean, okay.
All right, well, search continues for that.
What's his name? The guy that was tied?
Next item, well, we'll skip one here because this one will be a quick one too, is the Housing Authority Board member to replace Diane Culver. Craig, you said you had somebody?
Yes, David Mock.
David Mock.
He said he'd be good to run a pair of...
He's local. He's aggressive.
So, we have, David Mock is interesting in replacing Diane Culver on the Housing Authority Board. Guess we'd have a motion to appoint David Mock to that position. Does anybody else have any other candidates for the position? Board is open for any other nominations for the position. If not, someone would make the motion to appoint David Mock to that position.
I make the motion to appoint David Mock to the Housing Authority Board.
Commissioner Miller makes the motion to appoint David Mock to the Housing Authority Board in replacement of Diane Culver. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Mityer. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any others in favor of the appointment. Second by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Appointment approved. David Mock is hereby appointed to the County Housing Authority Board. Next would be the public nuisance on 8080 Highway 83 South, Litten, North Dakota, also known as the Evenson property. Joey, any updates?
Uh, yeah, a little bit. It was the last month, I think I said we thought we'd probably get an order early this month. Didn't get him served quite as quickly as I thought, but he's been served. He had until yesterday if he wanted to contest a hearing, a final answer in response to all that. He did not, so I'll be able to follow the documents today if the meeting is over in time and hopefully the judge decides right away and then we'll have an order. If not, then, yeah, I mean, most, some of the judges have been making us wait an additional three weeks, but I don't know if that'll happen. I have the kind of judge again.
Well, I was contacted by Mr. Evenson as well as Sheriff Sanders because he's been coordinating with me and with Gary. He sent some pictures and stuff. He has done some cleanup. It's an improvement. I don't know where the line is. You know, what's the line between now it's just kind of a messy yard or it's considered a nuisance? That's kind of up for discussion, I guess, more than anything. I don't know if anybody's looked at it. I drove by it this morning again. It's, like I said, it's improved. It's, in my opinion, it's starting to fall along the lines of maybe several other properties. You could probably go pick apart. Is it worse than them? Probably. Is it bad, in my opinion? Yeah, but I... Bad enough to weren't going in and cleaning it? I don't know. It's kind of a gray area opinion type thing at this point. That's where it's just kind of, I don't... I don't know what the right thing to do is other than to tell you that I've looked at it. Kevin's corresponded with me. He's made an attempt to clean it. And that's all I can really give you an update, I guess. Anybody else have anything to add?
I drove by it too this morning before I came in. I mean, he packed the vans and stuff up on the driveway area.
They are off the road now.
Yeah, for now.
Well...
I remember going to surrender our movement forward and then, I don't know what to say. It's a disaster on the east side of the house. And on the north side.
There's no argument it's a mess. I don't want anybody to get confused. I think it's a mess. That's more my opinion, more than where the law is or what the... You know, I mean, what defines a nuisance? Have we as a county really defined a nuisance? I mean, those are, I mean, you get where I'm coming from now, guys, like, we can go through it. We could pick on a vehicle or we could pick on something, but do we have anything that actually says we have the right to even pick on that is my big question? Or is there some state law to follow? I mean...
Do we? Joe, do we have the right?
We're using the state's, yeah, the state law.
State's description of a nuisance, public nuisance essentially, is what we're going for, so I mean, I mean, if there's some things that don't fit in with that, then, you know, maybe there's room to proceed, but I, I guess I don't, I just don't know what the proper answer is where it's like, because I'm, I mean, I don't... The right way to say it is that you could drive around any town, not just Litten, but you could go to Hazelton's, or you could probably find a couple of properties that, you know, you could start picking on whether or not it's clean or not. I mean, heck, Megamix Gaming was one of those till about two months ago when I just decided to finally clean it up. But I mean, especially running a business, you accumulate things. I mean, I, I just don't know what the proper rule is in this, and so.
So, Joe, if we put it on hold for now, and say two, three next spring, would we have to go through this again to re...
I would say, well, yeah, of course, probably find somebody else to do it because, well, I do all this work and get to the end, then you guys give up.
Right. Yeah, I feel that Joe, I guess, we went through this how many times already? We gotta, we gotta follow through.
Well, the question is, is how do you follow through? I mean, that's my question.
Just the way we're doing it.
I get that, but I mean, I'm, okay, so the last time this happened, you were here.
Yeah.
Might have just been you and me were the only ones. I think, I don't, because Alex was on. Alex learned it a day.
I think Gary was on.
Well, he might have been on another time.
I know that that's been cleaned several times, but the last time was about three years ago or so, four years ago, because I know we went out there.
Yeah.
I mean, when Kevin had it cleaned, we just walked around and said, yeah, it looks pretty good. I mean, I don't think there was like a specific checklist where, you know. What I'm getting at is, just because we deem that it doesn't look that nice, is it, are we following the proper rules and the laws? Well, what's clean? Where does it stop? Where is the proper, did he do enough now? Do we continue from this? Where do we stop from there? Like, I don't disagree with you, like, my opinion or my thought process or my question is, is if we have the court order, it's good for a year. So, I mean, it's not like, like, when you say put it on hold, it's like, if you don't take any action, you're really not putting it on hold. You're kind of still giving them the opportunity to continue cleaning with the fact that you still have an order.
Okay, so you're saying you want to continue to get the order?
Well, I, I mean, if I was going to just go through, just speak it for myself, I think you should continue with the order, so we have. Kevin's in the process of cleaning it, and he's made that perfectly clear, myself and Sheriff Sanders, that he is cleaning it. Now, there's no dispute that he's cleaning it. Is it up to, and the question, my main concern or question is, what is the point between clearing a public nuisance and invading someone's private property rights? That's my issue. That's my moral conundrum with this. I think it's happened before. If I was going to bet money, it's probably going to happen again, even if it comes into compliance, because it's been in compliance before and it's happened again. So, in my opinion, the best case scenario is Kevin to bring the property into compliance on his own. That way, there's no infringement. There's no, it's just him doing what he probably should have been doing anyway. If you have the court order, it should be good in theory until November of next year-ish, depending on when certain dates are issued and stuff. Just continue to give them the opportunity to clean it and see what happens, or, you know, because I, I don't feel comfortable bringing somebody in right now to tell them that something's clean or not clean when the only reason we're not cleaning some other properties is because no one's made a formal complaint. And that's the truth. I mean, there's other properties that if someone went and lodged a complaint, you'd be doing the same thing. Like, I, I don't disagree that the property's probably even a nuisance, but I, I mean, at what point do we start looking at what someone has a right to maintain on their property, what's considered a mess? And if we don't have that spelled out very well, we should spell it out. We should do a better job of that. If the state's definition isn't good enough, we should, you know, legally follow up with that if we wanted to find a nuisance. If we don't think it's right that he's got unlicensed vehicle on his property, that should be spelled out somewhere. We can't just go and say we don't like that, because there's unlicensed vehicles in other parts of the county that are just not getting complained about, and that's the only difference why they're not happening.
Well, I don't necessarily disagree with you, unless we're going to hire somebody who will look at their property and try to examine whether they're a nuisance or not. This is what you're going to be left with. If somebody maintains a property to the point where it's driving their neighbors, you know, up the wall and they have to complain, they complain and complain year in and year out, you're just going to run the risk of maybe losing some of your personal items that are scattered by your yard.
Right, and I, like I said, I don't have a problem with someone complaining about a nuisance, it being deemed a nuisance and it being brought into compliance. I don't have an issue with that, but my question is, is where does the compliance land? Like, has he reached that point? Do we have a definition where we can go out and go, okay, it's good enough where we're not going to bring someone in? I don't have that answer, and that's why I'm hesitant to proceed. Other than to maintain the court order, I think we should continue with that process, and we have that opportunity, but my question is more to the commissioners. Are we going to do something about it? If we are, what are we going to do? And that's the question that needs to be answered.
I think if I may speak to Commissioner Magrum.
Sure.
The issue here and how this all came about from history was initiated by complaints of the neighbors. And I've had this conversation with Mr. Evenson. If he lived in a different location where his nearest neighbor was a half mile away, this conversation would not be taking place, but unfortunately, he lived in very close proximity to two...
Other neighbors.
Neighbors that's directly affecting down, and that's how this whole thing started years ago, where the neighbors complaining about the rodents and the issues and the health hazards and concerns. If he was out in the county, which he is, but his nearest neighbor wasn't in close proximity like he is, I don't think this conversation would ever take place. But that's at the heart of this issue is, that location is affecting his neighbors.
Well, that's, that's like, you know, I talked to that lady several times. I lived there. Now, she's got little kids. She's concerned about her kids too, you know. And I guess I just feel we had given them all these chances already, and the public health came down and condemned it or whatever, and then we didn't follow through. Now, they don't want to come down anymore, right, Joe?
They don't really want to be involved.
See, now, they don't want to be involved anymore at all either, because we never do anything.
Well, I don't think that's why they don't want to be involved. They don't want to be involved because of the same question I just brought up. Where does the authority begin and end? Where is the...
No, that's not, he even made some threats about whether or not they were trespassing on his property. So, they'll be, well, they'll come down, you know, but we can take pictures from roadside. They don't really want to get involved unless we have administrative warrant. And then also, yeah, like, Commissioner Everly's point, they did make that comment too, if we don't follow through, so.
Yeah, well, and I get that. I'm not, I'm not arguing that property should be cleaned up. That's really not the dispute. The dispute is, is whose job is it and where does it start and stop, and that's where, because, I mean, let's face it, Kevin's got property rights just like the rest of us do. It doesn't matter if it's a lot the size of this room or if it's a thousand acres, he's got property rights too. So, that's where, if you're not going to have a defined tolerance to what's clean and what's not, and if the county hasn't done that, which the county hasn't been good over the years of doing those things, because it's not normally a problem you have to deal with. It's more of a, more for developed counties and cities that have to deal with that. So, my opinion, or at least what I think is the situation, is before we go in there and start cleaning it up, we better damn sure know what we need to be cleaning up and what shouldn't be touched. I don't know the answer to that, and I think there's been enough issues in the past here to know that if you're going in there without knowing what you're doing, you could get yourself in a lot of trouble too, and that's the main thing. If we're going to go in and clean it up, that's fine. We better have a plan. We better have the law on our side, and we better do it right, because if we're just going to go in there and start cleaning things that we think are nuisance, I mean, you're, I mean, it's, it's, it's a slippery slope. That's all I'm saying. I'm not disagreeing with you, Don, in that general sense, but I'm not just going to go in there, hire someone and go, that needs to go, that needs to go, that needs to go, and that needs to go. And I, who says that that's supposed to go? Who's, is there a law in Evans County that says you can't have a panel van unlicensed in your front yard? It's not pretty. Nobody likes to see it, but have we defined that to him, that we can't do that? Because if you haven't...
So, what's the public health? How do they, how do they...
Well, we'd be operating pursuant to the court's order, so whatever the judge writes in there, those items could be removed.
Right, so, I mean, that's, that's a difference. Now, if there's something in there defined that somebody is defining and there's legal backing to it, where we go in there and we remove it, we're not going to get sued for it, I'm having a different conversation with you guys. The question I'm bringing up is, are we going to do it the right way if we go in and do it? I don't want to just be a part of this group that's like, yeah, we're going to go in and clean it because a couple of people complained, but what did they complain about? And do they have the right to complain about that? That's, that's what I mean.
So, I'd say turn it over to Joe.
Well, if the judge finds it that way, then that's...
Well, then, that's a different conversation. I'm just bringing the conversation up to make sure we're all thinking on the right page and the right thought process, not that we're just going in trying to appease a couple of people, and doesn't mean that they don't have a right to complain, but we need to make sure that, I mean, because people could complain about a tree growing in a fence line. Well, is there something that says a tree can't grow in their fence? You know what I mean? Like, we can't just go out and just, because somebody doesn't like something, we have to go clean it up. We got to make sure we're doing everything according to the law. That's, that's the job, so.
Well, we get a judge's order, and then that should be clear.
Well, I'd say continue with the judgment or the order, and then whatever the order would allow us to do. If Kevin is not in compliance with that, then that's the conversation we have.
That's, yeah.
That's the right way to do it. Now, Kevin is in compliance.
I agree with that, just what you just said.
Well, if people don't like it, but he's in compliance with the order, then that's where our job as commissioners is to go. That's, it's no longer our responsibility.
The order has it outlined as to what has to be done.
It's got to be done right.
Clear as a bell.
Kevin's got rights just like the rest of us, even if, even if you don't like the way his yard looks, if he's... If we don't like it and it should be changed, then that's something that's our job. If there's, if there's legal leeway to make them stricter, then that's what we need to be looking at, rather than just going around and judging someone's property.
Well, their neighbors have rights too, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I agree. I don't disagree with that at all, and that's where our job as a board is, if we're going to start going, hey, we're not going to allow this no more, then we need to follow the proper processes to do that. You can't just decide that someone's property doesn't look nice and we're not going to allow this no more. That needs to be, that's why you have ordinances and public hearings and all that. We need to follow those proper processes. That's, that's the only way to do it.
So, it lays on Joe's hands.
So, for now, I would say just leave it up to Joe with that court order and whatever the order says, then that's how we proceed. Is that a fair enough statement for you, Joe, or enough instruction to continue for now?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add on the topic? If not, last item under Old Unfinished Business would be the county vehicle use, brought by Commissioner Miller. Go ahead, Craig.
Okay, well, in the handbook that I received when I became commissioner, it said about not bringing, using county vehicles for personal use to and from work. And I think it's maybe being abused a little bit. With the price of diesel fuel and the price of vehicles, that's costing the county quite a bit of money that we could be saving. And I think we should really look into this, this issue. Like, taking it home, because you're going to a meeting the next day, that's a different deal, because you're not using that to and from work. That's all right, according to the handbook.
Yeah, it's actually in 8.2, number nine, employees are not permitted to use county vehicles in place of personal vehicles for transportation to and from workplace. Says it right in, right in there, and, and when we first negotiated with Skyler back last spring, we actually gave him extra $2,000 or $3,000 for gas, not to drive a county vehicle back and forth. And we kind of went back on what we're saying, saying that.
So, is he actually driving a county vehicle back and forth every day or, I mean, or is he getting parts the next day, or what's he doing?
He can't be getting parts every day. If he's getting parts every day, it's got to be a better management deal than that.
We, we looked the records up in the building, and at the most, maybe two or three times a month, parts were picked up in Vismark. So, that's not, that doesn't warrant taking that home.
Is he taking it home every day, though? Is he taking that home? Do you know?
I don't know. Is he taking it home Monday through...
I don't know.
I've got a lot of...
Wednesday or what? I have no idea, but I'm assuming.
I've got some calls from people that do commute to and from Vismark, and they ask, why is he taking that home all the time? They see that county vehicle going north in the evening.
Oh, you figure the miles and the gas?
Yes.
The depreciation on that vehicle that gets spending for the county, I feel.
None of us know he's really doing that, though, right?
Pardon?
None of us really know if he's doing that every day, though.
Nope.
Well, we're not saying he does it every day, but just to take it home overnight is not, according to our rules.
Yeah, I mean, is he not taking, is he doing that, taking it home every night?
I don't know if I'm saying he is, but I'm saying even once a night, just for that is not, according to our rules.
Well, is there a logbook on it? I have no idea what they do out there.
Is there any accountability for it?
I don't even know the name of the guys that got hired, other than what Gary just sent out this morning, yesterday.
No other...
I don't know the name of the guy, too.
Didn't you get the email from Gary?
Uh, I haven't, no.
Okay. You sent an email out to all of us, didn't you, Gary?
This morning.
Okay. And how do we know, Gary, which of the phone numbers are county numbers or phones and which ones aren't?
There's just in that column, work phone, personal phone.
Okay, 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 okay.
Oh, that was just today.
Yeah. I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed, though.
Okay. How do we want to address it?
Well, we can ask Skyler when he comes in, what he's...
Right, well, I mean, but I mean, so we bring Skyler in, he says he's not doing that, so then where do we go from there? Do, I mean, do we want to create some kind of a log? Should we just create the handbook that it has to be parked at the county shop at the end of the day? I mean...
Well, I don't, I wouldn't want to say anything in reference to this. I don't want to get into the argument of it, but there can be a five dollar part picked up every day to justify the means of using the vehicle. I mean, you can pick up a filter if you want to play the game.
Right.
We got five common carriers that come down on a daily basis that can break in 50 bolts down if we need to for cutting edges. I farmed and I didn't make a trip to Vismark every day for parts. If I would have, I'd have went broke.
It's just a deal that if we're going to implement it on other employees, we need to do it with everybody. Now, is, you know, do I know for sure if he's doing it? No, I don't. But if he is, then it needs to stop.
Yeah, well, that's what we have to find out.
That has got to stop.
Right.
I mean, I drove back and forth to the power plants too. I wasn't a superintendent or a manager, but I drove to Cold Creek every day, and I didn't get paid windshield time or subsistence, anything. You drove, walked through the gate, you went to the shack, you punched in, you punched out, and you walked back to your vehicle and even, you drove home. And if I didn't like the trip, the miles, moved on to Wood and Washburn. That's what they'd say to you, you know?
Well, with the sake of time, we're going to have to move on, so it'd be fair to say we'll just bring this up at when Skyler comes in then? Or is there something else you want to continue on this? We can move on.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, Wayne Ely, tax director, office to serve.
Morning, gentlemen. In the interest of keeping you guys on track with time, I'll try to make this as quick as possible. Since coming into the position back in September, I was not actually part of the budget process, so I do have a budgeting request that I would like to break forth for you guys today. While the budget was set for next year, there wasn't an accounting of some extra hours for the clerk in the office, Karina. She would like to, and we would have the work to justify, a couple of extra hours a week so that she can get at least a pro-rated benefit. Do have a workup on what that would add to the budget by getting an extra one and a half hours a week. Bringing her up to about 21, 21 and a half hours. Right now, she's at about 19. A total increase for the entire year would be $2,401,000. So, I'd ask today if we can do an amendment to the budget to get that added so that this position can be a pro-rated benefit position.
Well, I guess the question would be, Marla, is usually, like, if you have some kind of a change, something happens after the budget's approved, let's say a need arises or something like that, and you hire someone or you bring in outside services, something like that, and the budget does go into the red, you generally amend it at the end of the year, right?
End of the year, right.
At the end of the budget year?
Right. So, you don't have to amend the budget if you approve this today. You just, you know...
Right. I, I mean, I guess, I guess the big thing for me would be if, if it's roughly $2,000 to $3,000, there is no saying that you won't have that in your budget at the end of the year with something else, or something happens where you don't end up working as much as you thought, vacation, illness, whatever, and you might not even have a budget issue. So, I guess my, I guess my opinion would be is if we want to give you a formal approval to let Karina work those hours, and at the end of the year, if that budget would be short $2,000, we could amend that budget, or you most likely would probably still have that leftover in your budget, maybe in another line item.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing is not even so much the money, it's just the classification of the position as far as being classified part-time with pro-rated benefits as opposed to right now, where it's a part-time, there's no benefits on the position.
Sure.
So, and that, that's what, that's what we're looking for ultimately. It makes it a much more appealing position in the event that in the future, whether Karina, myself are no longer here, you know, you are going to have a hard time getting a hold of somebody that's going to only work 19 hours a week, not getting the benefits or anything like that.
Right.
Whereas at least if this is a benefited position, that is a bit positive, and the cost is not exorbitant by any means. So, I guess that is what I'd technically be asking for, is that we can get this position defined as part-time partial benefit.
Sure. Anybody got any input on that discussion?
Are there any part-time employees within this county that get half benefits or part-time benefits? Is there?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know.
Amy's a part-time person. Art Dela's a part-time person.
Okay.
Josh is a part-time person.
And the requirement is roughly around like 20 or 21 hours, right? Because that's, there's like a threshold to meet a certain...
20 hours.
Because that's considered part-time is once you're basically half of a week.
And then how many hours you work over that 20 would basically determine the proration that you receive.
Right.
Like, I, I don't know everybody's case, but I believe if you're at 30 to 35 hours as opposed to the 37 and a half, where you get like an 80% proration.
Right.
You know, this would be more along the lines of a 50% proration, 60%.
Well, I guess my opinion is we should probably look into it a little further and just make sure that we're staying consistent with the other positions following the handbook. I hate to just make the, you know, decision right at the meeting right now, but, I mean, as, as far as looking into it, I guess I don't see a problem with checking into it and just, I think we should just make sure that we're staying consistent. Anybody else have any issues or concerns with that? Otherwise, I don't know. Might as well bring it up now. If not, I'd say if anything, it's probably another good idea to probably bring it up for the next meeting or something. We could probably put it under like Old Unfinished Business. And then that way it gives us some time to just look into it a little bit, rather than make a reaction and find out that we, you know, because obviously when we listed the position, that was probably an oversight. There's no point making another oversight today. So, if that's fair to you.
Yeah, we don't have a hard and fast timetable on when this would be to be implemented, other than, as, as you're aware of, with the changes in the way specifically the ND purge is done, we definitely would like to have this done before that change takes effect, so.
Sure. Well, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's something that we need to sit on for six months, but I think it would be fair to at least probably wait until maybe another meeting or two, just to make sure that we have enough time to... I just want to be fair to the other employees, not that we go and change something and now we have other, I mean, if we're going to have a part-time status for employees and we're going to be pro- I mean, if we're gonna have a part-time status for employees and we're gonna be prorating them, they should all be the same.
Yeah.
If that job is relatable or germane to that, I think, I think for now, probably just stay on your certain schedule that you already have now and stay consistent. And we'll, uh, we'll bring it back up after we get a chance to look into it and just make sure we're doing it right and following the rules. Fair enough? Okay, thanks Wayne.
Thank you.
Well, we're late on this, I guess, but a hearing for objections to the minimum sale price for delinquent tax properties within the cities. Is there anybody here for that hearing?
Um, no, but I can talk on it a little bit at night too. Um, one of the city auditors contacted me and regarding some specials, um, like Lynn City, for example, and that one house we took back. They had five hundred and thirty-one dollars worth of specials. And Strasburg City has like thirteen hundred and eighty-two dollars worth of some specials for the twenty thirteen tax, twenty twenty-three taxes. So in the past, it used to be where you would set the price of what the three-year delinquent taxes plus the specials would add up to. And that's a minimum price I would start out with the sale in November. But like, looking back at the century code, when legislators changed, made some changes, they also included where you can include the, that same year's special and estimated taxes. So what I bring it forward to you today is, um, the cities would like you guys to re, to amend the minimum sale price. Would you start, would you want me to start out at, at the November sale to include the twenty twenty-three estimate taxes and the specials? So that if somebody would buy a piece of property, the cities don't lose their twenty twenty-three specials. Plus we can collect some twenty twenty-three taxes on it also. So I, I, I typed up a list, a sheet that would show what you guys, um, had the, the minimum sale price set at at last month's meeting. And what I'm recommending for the new minimum sale price. So what are the properties would sell? The cities could recoup some of their, their specials for unpaid water bills and sewer bill.
The last month, that was just for the taxes, right?
Yeah, for the, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, and the twenty taxes. So what we're, what I'm asking people on behalf of the cities to do then, um, include the twenty twenty-four. Cause the century code does allow it now. I gave you a copy of that century code. Joe, did you read? I gave you a copy too. I, I'm correct on that, right? You have a copy for you too, you can include the, the year.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
The current assessment year, you can include those taxes.
This is just a three properties then.
It's starting to see why some of these are coming back. I mean, with the specials and everything on that house in Strasburg, I don't even know if it's worth sixty-eight hundred and seventeen dollars. I mean, that's, that's a lot.
And yet these properties will be sold, but they're saying that they do at least they can recoup some of their specials.
Is he still in there in Strasburg?
I don't think so.
I think it's the whole Kus house, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's on the corner.
Oh, there's two of them there.
Yeah.
He's got two of them.
He's got that old Schwab poster, that shot.
He's got him in the Kus house, I think.
And if you want to act on this later in the meeting, chairman, that's fine, if you want to move on.
Okay. Well, I guess, are there any objections? There's no other objections, no one's here to object. Okay, well, we'll push it up till later in the meeting so that way we can get that on track. So we'll kind of later, so Frank and Steve Worlenger, you are next up. Fence man at our section line, very good way near Twenty Second Avenue Southeast and Ninety East, South.
Yep, got a couple of questions, uh, with the ball. You want to register a letter for like, uh, saying that, uh, you guys lost a case and, and, uh.
We lost a case.
Yeah. It's against the county.
You're in it too, it's your fence.
Yeah, well, it was against the county, but anyways, um, saying that you need to move the fence by November sixteenth. Fence next to impossible to find a contractor this time of the year. They're booked out till freeze off. I'm gonna have to get an extension of that.
I don't think he can, no. I think.
I think the court order is pretty specific on that, isn't it Joe? Or the judgment?
Well, I think the judgment just was, uh, yeah, basically saying that he has, has to move the fence right away. They didn't really give a date, I mean, we just have to follow the century codes.
Oh, the century code says what, twenty or thirty days?
Yeah, I believe it was thirty days.
Sure.
Something like that. Whatever it was, it was included, whatever it was.
Yeah. But to, to get that fence moved this, this year, I called three fencers. And there's like, no, it ain't gonna happen this year.
Well, then I'll have a choice, we have to have our guys take it down and roll it up for you.
I don't know. But it needs to be moved, cause I got cattle in there and I plan on moving them. I plan to keep them in there till, at least things, as far along as I can. And I got stocks to graze and all that.
Well, I think all that's fine, except that, I mean, the responsibility.
Can't just take it down, cause then the cattle be running.
Yeah, but the responsibility to move the fence is up to you. I mean, it, in the end, it's your responsibility to move that fence now. I mean, the judge was.
Well, that's another thing I was gonna get to. In the September minutes, um, you guys voted that that fence was fine. And you okayed the variance where the fence was at. And apparently that variance never got signed. I was gonna ask why it never got signed? Because when that went to court, it looked like Steve Worlenger put out the fence without proper authority.
Well, that fence was illegal and the variance was illegal, that's why it didn't get signed. I mean, I didn't sign it, cause I wasn't gonna put my name to it. It wasn't legal. I mean, you were literally crossing your fence over on someone else's property.
It's not crossed on.
But the variance allowed that. Doesn't matter if you move the fence, the variance, the paperwork allowed that fence to exist where it was when the survey took place. Which was that fence was on Terry Beaker's land. And that's, that's property law one oh one, you don't even need to be a lawyer to know that. So that's why I didn't sign it. I mean, uh, I mean, Gary's the vice chairman, he voted for it, he could sign it if he wants, that's fine. But I wasn't gonna put my name to something that was knowingly violating the law. That's not, that's why I didn't sign it.
But it was, um, it is, uh, it's definitely not, it's, it's on my, my side, actually, it's not on Terry's.
Right, but the variance allowed you to put that fence on Terry's. That variance, as it was drafted, allowed you to put that fence on someone else's property. That's not, that variance.
Well, it has to be rewritten, not?
Well, it can't now though, because it went to court and the court decided that that variance wasn't legal to begin with. So the variance, even the first draft wasn't, wasn't, wouldn't hold up in court.
Well, it's kind of on you guys, though, cause you guys voted for that.
But you didn't build the fence even where the first variance said to put it. So again, it's on you, cause the fence is not where it's supposed to be either the first time. And the second time was deemed by a judge that it's not legal. So in the end, your defense is in the wrong spot.
It definitely looked to that judge, because he did not know that the county was standing behind me. It just looked like Steve Worlenger put out the fence without proper, it said it right in the.
Yeah, but the county did stand behind you in essence, got taken to court over it.
So there, there could have been one done there, but.
I don't know what more you could have wanted, and literally the county got taken to court for your fence that was in the wrong spot. I don't, again, Steve, the problem with this whole situation in the end is that your fence has been in the wrong spot. The county commissioners took sympathy on you because of the situation, which I don't think anybody even disagrees. That the section line's pretty rough and it's not easy to fence, that's where this whole thing came about.
Yeah, you're right.
It's kind of like what the discussion we had this morning with evens since property. Our opinion versus what the law says are two very different things. And the opinion of the commissioners as a majority, in the three to two vote for the second variance even, was that the opinion was we're gonna let you keep the fence there. And that got overruled by a judge. The law says that we couldn't do it. So in the end, your fence needs to move.
Even in that century code.
We're not gonna debate century code here, it's already been debated in a court of law. If you want to take it any further than that, you're probably allowed to do so, the courts are at your disposal. But for as the commission, and I'm just gonna speak as the chairman on this, this topic has been discussed and exhausted at every length. If enough is enough, the fence has to move. And either you're going to move it by the time allotted to you, or it's going to get moved and you're gonna pay for it. That's just the way it's gonna be, that's, there's just no other description for it. The county had your back, if that's, you're saying it didn't get backed up, but that variance could have got brought up, revoted on. Three of the, what, there's two commissioners that aren't even here anymore that voted for it out of the three. We could have easily brought it back up, shut it down, forced you to move your fence and avoided a court battle. But it didn't go that far. And the part of the reason I was even interested in having it is I was curious to see how far it would go to, even though I didn't support the second variance. I don't mind that it got debated in court, because this topic comes up all the time. What's the authority of the county? Where should these fences be? Where should these roads be? You know what? A judge basically told us that there's a law and we have to follow it. And there isn't any discretion by the county commissioners. So unless somebody wants to appeal that, which I don't think there's any appetite from this board. I would say that that fence has to move by the sixteenth or the seventeenth or whatever date Joe's letter said. And if you don't move it, it's going to get moved for you. That's basically the bottom line.
You guys wouldn't get it until next year?
I don't think we even legally could, because we'd probably get sued again. So it doesn't, it doesn't, there's no avenue for it.
It would have to be up to Joe.
Well, I don't think it would be up to Joe.
Well, I already sent the letter.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking you. That's why I'm here, you know?
It's no.
Because it's just a timeline, timeline, at the time of the year, we got winter in front of our door.
I can't give you any extension, that would be up to the, up to the commissioners. And I kind of, and I agree with what Chairman Edgar was saying, you know, so.
I don't think we could legally even give you an extension, I couldn't even answer that question. And as far as anything else goes, I think there's been plenty of extension on it. We've been talking about this fence for four years. I mean, something, you had to have known that it was probably gonna have to move. And if you're not prepared to move it, I, I, I don't disagree with you, it's gonna be almost impossible to get somebody to move it for you. But that's, that really has no bearing on the situation. The situation is that fence has to move legally by the sixteenth unless some other thing takes place. And I don't know what that thing would even be.
Yeah, this whole thing is just, this never ever should have been. It's all kind of, you know, shame on us, it's shameful for us, it's shaming for you. Cause why, you know, it was wrong decision to do in the first place. You guys knew it was wrong too. Why, you know, it was surveyed twice. Why don't you just, like I told you Frank before, why don't you just put it, put it on your land? You'll never have a problem.
Cause you can't.
But you didn't like that.
You can't put it across the creek if you have any brains to have a look at it.
Yeah, have you looked at it?
Yeah, I was.
No, I don't think you have.
Wait, hold on, we're not gonna turn this into a shouting match. Okay, big deal is this, it doesn't matter if there's a four hundred foot deep canyon there. The law is thirty-three feet off the section line and a judge deemed it that way. There's really no other avenue, there's no other argument. I, I'm not trying to be mean, you see.
You guys, you know, you think it's in black and white in September minutes, you voted for that fence. Yep. So what I'm, if, if it's gotta be moved, if you declared that it's gotta be moved, I'm saying you guys should have to move it and put it back up. Because you told me within September minutes. I got an attorney looking at it, he said it's black and white.
I hope your attorney's pretty sharp, cause I'm gonna tell you one little thing that you're missing here. Your first variance, which we shouldn't have gave you anyway, but we did because we thought we were helping two neighbors get along. When actually the dispute was, is that the fence was illegal, okay? That's why we went down this path. I thought if it moved over here and parts where people didn't use, the two neighbors would be happy. That wasn't the case. The fact of the matter is, is you never even put the fence where it should have been with the first variance. So there wouldn't even be a need for a second variance if you had built it right in the first place. So you are in no way compliant with your fence. There's no scenario where you're in the right here, Steve. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, Steve.
It doesn't matter, yeah. Cause the fence is, is on my side of the section line.
But it's not inside the right of way. You're, you're arguing something you don't have a right to argue, Steve.
You guys voted.
And you put it in the wrong spot.
I mean, it's.
You put it in the wrong spot. If there wouldn't be a second. If, if you're, if there would.
Is the fence there now?
Yeah, according to an illegal second variance that we weren't even allowed to draft. And on top of it now, if there wouldn't be. Well, you gotta ask the three guys that wanted to vote for it, because I didn't vote for it, because it was on someone else's property.
And if you wanna say that you didn't vote for it, well, you told me to put the fence farther out. You told me to put it off the section line, I was like, no, I would never do that.
Okay, so if you want to sit here and just play hearsay after the fact or the simple fact.
It's not hearsay.
Steve.
You know, do you.
Steve.
Okay.
What, your fence is in the wrong spot and it needs to move. That's it, there's no other discussion to be had here. You felt, if you think someone else should pay for your fence, then you're gonna have to go about that, whatever needs you think is necessary. But the bottom line is your fence is in the wrong spot and it needs to move to the right spot within the next ten-ish days. Or whatever the exact date is on that letter, that's the bottom line.
Uh, that's gonna be next, it won't, it, it won't happen in the next ten days.
Oh, it's gonna happen, because if you don't take it out, we're going to take it out. Because we're not gonna be out of compliance of this court order. All right, you, you've gotten the leeway from us. We, the, the board as a whole, when I say us, tried to allow you to put a fence in a spot that was convenient. It's not legal, that's done, that discussion is over, it's done.
Whole thing costs a lot of money, it costs you guys a lot of money. You moved that fence twice, now the third time. Now you gotta get, now you're gonna have to go get it surveyed again to know where to put the fence. I mean, what, how many times do we want to do this? And I said right away, why don't you just put it where it's supposed to be? I have nothing against you, but you're gonna have to anyway.
Well, then the fence can't exist.
Put it in the creek.
Well, then it can't exist then, it can't, that's the thing, it doesn't, you can't allow it to exist inside the right of way, because it can't exist somewhere else. Then it needs to be five hundred feet off the right of way then.
On the section line is not travelable.
Well, the judge, the judge deemed it travelable. You guys are arguing something to people that don't even have the right to argue it anymore. You need to argue it with the judge, you need to take it to the courts, hire a lawyer, appeal it, sue, that's your next avenue. Because we have, our hands are tied, there is no more leeway from us, the court decided, there's no more leeway. You, you're arguing something that can't be argued here no more. The fence has to move, it has to move at least thirty-three feet. It can, you can move it five hundred if you want, if that makes it easier to fence, but it has to be at least thirty-three feet. That's, unless I'm off on the judgment, that is what I was told and instructed, and that's what's gonna happen. And if you don't move it, it's going to get moved and you're going to be billed for it, because you're approaching on the right of way, per a court order. Not the county commissioner saying it now, county commissioners did everything they could to try and help you. Judge said we can't, that's it, it's done.
Yeah, okay.
There's no other avenue.
Now, another question, um. Could a guy close the section line down?
You'd have to go through the proper process of the century code.
Oh, I kind of, I was reading through that yesterday.
And you think that section line would be closed down when you know you have neighbors disputing wanting access to it? I mean, that doesn't even make any sense.
The neighbors have to agree to close it.
This is, this is turning into some kind of feud and this county has been a part of enough of them and it's not gonna continue.
Kind of what I read, it kind of, it comes down to the commissioners.
It does not come down to the commissioners, until there are several other definitely defined steps that need to get followed. If you want to follow through that process, you're more than welcome to. I don't think you're gonna.
It's a pretty lengthy process.
That's exactly right, and it's a defined process.
Yep.
Where there's very little leeway by the county commissioners, so.
Well, you guys should know, you guys just closed one down.
That's right, but that process even goes outside of us, where that process has to happen through the state's attorney and no other.
You have to have the chasing law, landowners to agree. That's the first step you have to have.
Sure.
And there's, yeah, you just have to follow petition process.
Yeah, there's a process.
You have to get signatures for people in the area.
Yep, you gotta have hearings.
But even if you want to close it down, that fence has to come down before that, I mean, it's gotta come down within the next several days.
Whenever that deadline date is from the paperwork Joe sent you, that's the deadline.
Jay.
I know you didn't like the last time, but I was trying to help you guys.
You worked against us, I'm sorry, we did one, don't we?
Frank, I was trying to, I don't, every, okay, everything to do with.
We all know it's hard. If you, if you, and if you're out there and look at it, it's, it's childish is what it is. Cause I just fixed the fence from, I just moved cattle in there a couple of weeks ago.
Guys, I don't mean to be rude, I'm gonna interrupt you on one thing.
It's not travelable.
It doesn't matter, none of that matters right now. This has been settled in court, it's over.
And you say fixing it across the creek, I know, it's tough to pick the fence across.
Listen, hey, this guy. Listen, hey, this conversation is over. This agenda item is over.
There's no sense in discussing it.
This meeting is descending.
The judge decided what is supposed to happen. We'll just move forward. It's over.
The judge is out there, the fence has to move or it will be moved. There's no other, there's no other stance.
It's a combination of ideas. It can't be.
What are you going to do? Are you going to take down the fence or should we be gone?
Well.
No. Not anyway. Because if not, we're going to have something.
But what are you doing to change?
Was it finished?
I don't know, we haven't done this. We have totally reached for equipment and men, then whatever the equipment and manpower take to do it, that's the only.
And you guys could take it down, right?
Yeah, we're not going to rebuild it. It'd probably just get taken down and taken off the right of way. So it's probably not going to be done in a way that you're going to be happy with. I can say that because they're not professional fencers, they're road guys and we're going to send one or two guys that we can spare and they're going to go out with a skid loader and pull the posts and, and I don't, we don't really have a way to roll up the wire. It's not going to be pretty. It's not, if it's a good new fence, you're going to be muddy head moving it yourself because if the county does it, it's not going to be dissatisfactory. It's going to be dissatisfied by the legal document we've been served.
Well, I guess I, I, except I'm one man. I can only get so much done, so temporarily, I guess I'll put up, I'm going to have to put a hot wire there and, and go from there. I'm sure I'll be seeing you guys again, but.
All right.
I can't promise. I mean, it's. Look, I came here to, I mean, I know you guys could give a guy an extension and it wouldn't hurt nobody if, if one could say it's an extension that it needs to be moved.
Well, we thought the variance wouldn't hurt anybody. We ended up in court. So Steve, the, the theory that the extension, we don't even know what that's.
The other side, the other side is pretty childish and didn't grow up yet.
Well, it doesn't really matter because the court sided with that other side and I don't even, well, if there's an extension process for this, I wouldn't even begin to sue it. So the fence has to move. That's just the end of it. There's just no other discussion to have. I'm sorry, Steve. It's not, it's not the answer you want. It's the answer we have to get.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, guys. Francis, you're next on the agenda. Pertaining to the same matter according to the agenda, so.
Thank you, commissioners, for letting me come forward this morning. At this point, Chairman Agar, I will relinquish my time back to the county. If I need to come in next meeting, I'll get back on the agenda. You've answered everything adequate for what I needed today. Is that correct or already?
That's up to you if you want to yield your time.
I will yield it.
Okay, thank you, Francis.
Okay, thank you, commissioners.
Chairman, Commissioner?
Sure.
If we have an opportunity, I'd like to have a deputy introduce himself.
We actually do have a couple of minutes because we're ahead of schedule for Brad's five here, so.
Okay, I'll introduce Deputy Cunningham. Sean came out on with this last week, November first, we're still in the process of licensing issues and a whole bunch of stuff. Yes, there's a process for that. So I'll introduce Sean and if you would introduce yourself to him and I'll get, I'll let him give a little bio on his background. Go ahead.
My name's Sean Cunningham. I'm issue director for twenty-six years as a federal law enforcement officer. Did my last eight years over on Hot San Rock, the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Been retired about a month and a half. Prior to coming into law enforcement, I served in the United States Army. I was an infantryman. Final unit was the escorts to the president. And then I started my law enforcement career, started with the United States Capitol Police in Washington, DC, and then became a federal game warden covering the Everglades in Florida before coming out to BIA. Bought a house in Ashley about two years ago in preparation for retirement and I currently live down the street from the post office right now.
Oh, you bought that house right across the post office?
No, I'm just saying, saying an apartment down the street.